Thank you. It is Tuesday, October 14th, it's 6:30 PM and I am calling to order the Town of Erie Urban Renewal Authority for first order of business. Can we please get a attendance roll call?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hobart.
Here.
Commissioner Scheick.
Here.
Chair Moore. Commissioner Pesimorelli.
Present.
Vice Chair Bell.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Mortolero.
Here.
Commissioner Babs.
Present.
Commissioner Orr.
Here.
And Commissioner Peppler.
Present.
Vice Chair, you have a forum.
Thank you. For the first support order of business, we have the consent agenda.
We have approval of the agenda first.
Approval of the, sorry, approval of the agenda, item 25523. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, or motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's unanimous. So then, next item, 25511, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Erie Urban Renewal Authority approving a first amendment to pledge the agreement with the nine mile metropolitan district and the associated omnibus certificate.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but you just have the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Which includes both 25523 and 25511.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So you just need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sorry, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Now, motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? That's unanimous. Next section is the public comment section. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? This is for the Urban Renewal Authority.
I don't see anyone signed up.
Okay, all right. So we move on. The next item is item 25571. This is an executive session item.
I move to go into executive session to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property pursuant to CRS 24-6-402A or 4A to hold a conference with the authority's general counsel to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 or B and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 or E, all regarding a potential urban renewal development in Old Town Erie.
Okay, there's a motion from Commissioner O'Connor. Is there a second? Second. Okay, before I take the roll call vote, this is the only item on there. So do we just adjourn after we're finished?
Yes, yes. So you can say that the URI meeting will be adjourned immediately after the executive session.
Okay, we will adjourn immediately after executive session. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we will. Executive session, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Two firsts, and I say, okay. We'll have Councilor Baer for the first, and Councilmember Mortalora for the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, sounds unanimous. Next item is public comment. Ms. Samp, do we have anybody sign up?
We have one person signed up.
Okay, all right, just have a quick script here. It is now the time for the public comment portion of the meeting. Please remember, public comment is not an interactive question and answer forum, but rather a time for you to state your comments on a particular item or issue. Public comment provides the opportunity to discuss items that are not public hearings. Please sign up using the kiosk in the lobby. If you have a handout, please give it to the town clerk to the left. They will distribute it to the council and include it into the meeting record. When called upon, please state your full name and location for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You will be given a 20-second warning when your three minutes are almost up. At the three-minute mark, you will be asked to wrap up your final sentence. All opinions are welcome. Please be respectful to each speaker. To ensure everyone feels welcome to share their comments, please refrain from any cheering, clapping, booing, or otherwise disruptive behavior.
Jim Davis.
Mr. Davis here.
Let me just make sure he's not online. Nope.
Okay.
All right.
With that, we will close public comment. We will move on to general business. First item on the agenda is 25573, Presentation of the 90-Second Celebration Video. Sorry? Oh, sorry. Apologize. We have somebody, let's move back to public comment. There's one other person sign up there, sorry.
Did you sign up for public comment?
Oh, yep, okay, sorry about that.
Well, I have two people that signed up for Planning Commission public comment.
Oh, yeah, no worries at all. Go ahead.
All right, sorry about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
So, we were here in September for the council meeting discussing Lafayette.
We just need your name, sorry.
Oh, sorry. John Rondash, and the address is 4242 119th Street, Lafayette. That's the property in question. So, okay, so we, Meg and I, both were here in September to voice our thoughts of what's happening to our property, which is being flooded by the development of KB Homes on the Lafayette property. We came to voice our opinion on that, also the facts that we've gathered since then. Since that time, we've had a meeting with the, some of the representatives and the city of Erie engineer. I think that was on the 20, that was September 20... We had a meeting with them. I don't have the exact date sitting in front of me right now. Anyway, so we sat here and chatted about it, and then it was kind of cut short because there was too much information to go over. We also were able to speak with Mark Armstrong, who's the developer of KB Homes virtually, and that was just last week. And so basically, what's happening is with the Colorado Department of Reclamation and Mines has made a recommendation about what the legacy mines that run underneath the properties and between the RTD and also the Lafayette property, that KB Homes disturbed or moved the monolith, which they have, we've noted that that was done. When they did that around June of 2025, it flooded our property. We had, we had and still have quite a bit of water at 100 gallons per hour running through our basement. We have three separate sump pumps that were put in a few years ago. Those are running 24/7. I had to put a bilge pump within those sump pumps just to move it outside of the house so it did not flood the floors. We brought this to the attention. KB Homes was not getting back to us. They finally got back to us, so we had a conversation without legal representation, trying to come up with a solution. The first thing he was asking was, what are we looking for? And I asked him directly, we need new studies, because the studies he keeps quoting is talking about historical flows and everything in the properties in that area. Well, they started to develop another 220 homes there, and before they capped that, that parking lots and everything like that, it's going to have a quick runoff. There's nowhere for that water to run. There's no permits of the catchment or release of that pond that's out there, and all that water is going to go across our property, through our neighborhood, and everybody else is going to get flooded out. And we have studies that do show that. So, what I asked Mark was, we need more studies. Everything's going to stop, we just need to get some studies to figure out how we can fix this.
20 seconds.
So, that's basically, and Meg's going to finish what I'm talking about, because it's way too much information, so just catching you guys up to date, so, thank you.
Meg Knopf Singer.
You can go ahead, yep.
My name is Meg Knopf Singer, and I own the property at 4242 North 119th Street. I came last month after months and months of calling every official I could think of because my basement was flooding, mold is happening in the basement. I have three kids. My pasture became unusable for any of my horses or animals, which requires us to board animals. It's been quite an expense. We finally showed up here asking for help because we understood that you permit these people who don't live in the town of Erie to come and build all of these houses, and it's affecting our home, it's affecting my neighbors' homes. You know, they're all like, well, I thought we were going to get together and do something, but I'm too busy working and managing kids to try and organize an entire neighborhood who's having the same issues. So, the water's flowing through this property first, and then to the neighbors. But after the last meeting here, the council asked for us to come and go to a room upstairs, and just basically went through reports. Well, our report says it's this, so, and there was no help. So, we've sunk all our money into this property. We are asking you for help to stand between this development that doesn't live in this town, that has no investment in this town, and to please stand up for our rights as homeowners in this town who are living, working, and dying in this place. So, please, if you could find somebody in the city of the town to help us, because we are at a loss, and I cannot fight a multimillion-dollar company to save my home. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming, I'm familiar with the situation. Do we have people on staff that are...
We do have staff that are working on this issue, and will continue to until we get a resolution.
Okay, thank you. So with that, before I move on, anyone else for public comment? Okay, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, move on to general business. First item, 25573, Presentation of 90-Second Celebration Video. Presenter Melissa Wiley, Deputy Town Manager.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem and council. It's been a while since we did one of these, so we're excited to bring this to you today. And I'm actually not going to introduce it. I'm going to hand it off to Kathy Kron, who's our Development and Neighborhood Services Division Manager and Parks and Rec. And just some logistics, Kathy will introduce it. We'll watch the video, and then we'd love for all of you to take a picture with the Boy Scouts this evening, so after the video, if you could come up to the front for a picture.
Thanks, Melissa. Again, Mayor Potem Bell and council, I'm Kathy Kron, Development Neighborhood Services Division Manager with Parks and Recreation, and I have the honor to introduce this 90-second video to celebrate completion of a successful Eagle Scout project by our Erie resident, Jeremiah Havren. Jeremiah is here with his parents, and just a few of his friends, the scout troop, scout leaders, so thanks for joining us tonight. This is exciting. So Jeremiah has been patiently working with town staff for over a year to install flag collection boxes around town. Hopefully, you've noticed the one outside of Town Hall at the south entrance. And I just have to say that it's no easy task, working with staff with different departments and divisions, to get things approved. He's also been raising funds for the project. He's been managing the budget. He coordinated installation with his troop and kept track of all that. Most importantly, he fed everyone, I believe. Important things. So, anyway, I'm just excited to celebrate the success. He saw a need in the community, figured out how to meet that need. In my understanding, it's been really successful. I think I read in the report that he collected 80 flags in the first three weeks of having them installed. So, with that, I just, let's enjoy the video, and take a look, and take the photo afterwards. Thanks. Local Eagle Scout Jeremiah Havren saw a need in the community and set out to have his scout troop fill that need. What was needed? A respectful place to retire worn U.S. flags, ensuring they're handled with dignity. For the past year and a half, Jeremiah has been working with town leaders to obtain approval and determine appropriate locations, all while designing the boxes and having them fabricated. Installation was done by Jeremiah and the troop themselves. The boxes are located at Town Hall, the Erie Community Center, Clayton Park, and Columbine Mine Park. Community members who have worn U.S. flags can bring them to the collection boxes, and Troop 62, Erie's hometown troop, will take it from there. We're grateful for this opportunity and partnership with Eagle Scout Jeremiah, and proud to celebrate this service and contribution to the community. Head out to a collection box near you and help Jeremiah and Eagle Scout Troop 62 honor our nation's symbol by disposing of it respectfully.
Realized this was happening. The Havreins for quite some time now, and this is really cool, because my daughter used to babysit your kid, so this is a really special moment for me. So, congratulations to all of you, and we can take some pictures here, so.
I already used it. Stop piling flags.
Yeah, yeah. All right, that was cool. You guys have a tough act to follow there, so. Yeah. All right, so the next item on our agenda is 25546. This is Presentation of the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit. So with that, our finance staff.
Thank you so much, council. My name is Sarah Hancock. I'm the Director of Finance, and I'm joined this evening by our Deputy Director of Finance, Ann Penny. If you've not met her yet, she's fantastic, and we're so happy that she's joined the town. We're also joined by our partner with CLA, our auditor, Allison's Life. And so we're essentially going to go through our audit process, the findings that we do have this year, and our corrective actions for those findings. And then we'll have time for questions and anything that you guys want to know about what happened this year. So with that, I will hand it over to Allison.
Great, thanks so much. Good to see you all, and thanks for having me this evening. So, we did put together a PowerPoint presentation just to try to summarize the very large... So we did put together PowerPoint presentation just to try to summarize the very large financial statements that are issued. So certainly, if there's any questions or if you want me to cover anything a little bit further, I can. So just to keep us on track here, though, we'll go ahead and just summarize the audit scope. So way back when we were engaged, every year we get engaged to perform the audit as, from an external audit perspective. So this really summarizes what that scope was. It is the same as what we were originally engaged to perform an audit over the town's financial statements, issue an audit opinion over the financial statements. And then there's various other required communications that we have as being the external audit firm directly engaged to perform the audit. So there is a required governance communications letter that does get issued at the end, so I'll cover some highlights from that letter. And then because the town is subject to a single audit, which is because of federal funding that the town receives, so the threshold has changed, but it was still 750,000 or more of federal funding, the town has to go through a single audit. So that's basically a deep dive into federal programs, both over internal controls as well as compliance with those programs. So there's basically two other reports or audit opinions that we issue at the back part of the financial statements. One is over internal controls or over financial reporting, so that's related to the financial statements themselves. And then there's also a report on internal control over compliance with major programs. So that's for the actual federal programs that we audit. And then any sort of findings and recommendations is also part of that overall deliverable with our audit. Go to the next slide here. So just a very high-level audit process, kind of what we went through during our planning procedures, which were earlier within the first part of 2025. We do go through internal controls, and we do testing over certain key controls related to the town's processes and procedures. Also part of that, we also review the information technology systems or IT review by folks that are direct employees of CLA that are IT specialists, so they go through a deep dive on the IT side. There's also different aspects of the audit process that are really summarized in that letter I referred to around any sort of major estimates or findings, things like that. And then I already mentioned the single audit, so I'll cover that in a second in terms of those results over those major federal programs. And then this past year, related to the 2024 year-end, there was a new accounting standard that was implemented, required to be implemented by government or organizations, so such as the town and other governments that report under Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB is that acronym. So that was statement number 101, which was related to compensated absences. So we'll cover that in a second, but that was a new standard that all governments had to analyze, kind of what their leave balances were, kind of what would fit under the standard, and then implement that accrue additional amounts related to that new standard. So that was really the biggest new change, if you will, that was required to be implemented for that year. Alright, moving along. So in terms of the audit opinion and audit results, I mentioned those kind of three main audit opinions, if you will. So one of them over the financial statements, one of them over federal awards, and then also internal controls over the financial statements. So those are kind of the three main audit opinions. So the actual financial statement over independent auditors report is what we call it, but that was an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion that the town can receive. So did want to congratulate the town on achieving that again for this past 2024 fiscal year related to the overall opinion on the financial statements. There was also related to the federal awards here, kind of the left side of the screen here. We did have, so kind of the two options is a unmodified or clean opinion or a modified opinion is kind of the next level, if you will. So we did need to modify our overall audit opinion related to one of the federal programs that we did audit, and that was the COVID-19 ARPA Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, that SLFRF is the acronym, but that's the Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, and that was related to one of the compliance areas that we did test for procurement, suspension, debarment. So I'll cover that in a bit more detail as far as the details of that finding, but did want to just mention that. But we did have an unmodified or clean opinion for the rest of the programs we audited or the compliance requirements that we audited. So on kind of the right side of this, were the overall results. So related to the internal controls over financial statements, we did have one material weakness noted. I'll cover that in a bit more detail in a second. And then we did also have two other findings related to the federal awards. So one was a material weakness, and then one was a significant deficiency. So just to kind of recap kind of the differences there, so kind of the most severe type of finding that you can have is a material weakness. A step down from that is a significant deficiency, still gets reported as part of the results, but kind of not as pervasive or severe as a material weakness. The three programs that we did test this past year was the ARPA Fiscal Recovery Funds Program that I mentioned, and then we also tested the Hazard Mitigation Grant as well as the Airport Improvement Program. So those were three programs that we did test as part of the single audit. Alright, so the first finding, and I'll kind of go through just kind of the bullet points, if you will, the highlights on each one, and then I'll pause to allow management to kind of address each finding and the corrective action that the town is taking to address these findings. So this first finding is labeled 2024-001, so that's just the, if you're following along with the actual document, that's how that's labeled. So this is the material weakness in internal controls over financial reporting. So this is over the specific control as it relates to financial statements. There were several different audit adjustments and revisions that were necessary to properly state balances at year-end. So basically, for the town to achieve a unmodified or clean opinion over the financial statements, these were adjustments that were reconciled and corrected so that the financial statements that were issued were materially correct. Here, I kind of summarized just the different aspects, the actual finding detail within your financial statements has a lot more detail, but they primarily related to year-end accruals, reconciliation of cash activity, developer deposits, and then some other related kind of cash true-ups, if you will, between the different funds of the town. We also did have significant year-end adjustments related to grant activity to make sure that things were properly presented as well. So those were kind of just the, you know, real quick bullet points related to the finding, but there is a lot more detail within the actual detail of the finding within your annual comprehensive financial report document. So I'll pause there for, yes, Sarah and Ann, if they wanted to cover that.
No, thank you. And if you do want to follow along in the audit, it's actually on page 153 with the specifics of those adjustments that needed to be made. So I'm going to let Ann talk a little bit more about this because this is actually really her forte and what she's been working on since we did get this finding. Last year, we did have a similar finding where we had to put additional controls in place for our year-end checklist and add additional layers of review. Again, this year, we've needed to add more review, and a lot of that has to do with the sheer volume of what we're encountering at this point. So I'm going to let Ann talk about our new checklist and kind of what that entails. Thank you.
Yeah, so basically, when we received these findings after the end of the audit, we've already debriefed amongst staff, so our accounting staff as well as our grant staff. And what we've come up with is just a really much more detailed year-end checklist than we had previously. And for each of the areas that are noted here, amongst others, we want to make sure we catch this in any area, added another level of review, which would be what I'd be doing at year-end, to ensure that, you know, not only is our staff reconciling these accounts, but that we really have that kind of higher level review before it's getting to the auditors. And so we've really tried to implement that within the new checklist. We've also, you know, taken another look to it, our monthly checklist that we do as well, just, you know, so we can catch this along the way. So it's also not such a large lift at year-end due to, as Sarah noted, the volume of transactions we're looking at now in the town.
Thank you. Alright, so going to the next finding here, and so these two focus specifically on the federal programs that we did audit. So this next one relates to the Fiscal Recovery Funds Program that is funded through the COVID-19 monies from years ago, but, you know, spent over multiple years, as you all are well aware. This relates to procurement, suspension, debarment. So this was the finding that we did have that did result in that modified opinion related to that specific area of procurement, suspension, and debarment. So we did not have any sort of modification of our opinion related to other compliance areas, but that was one of the compliance areas. So part of this testing, just to kind of back up a little bit, or what this is, is any sort of vendors or contractors that are paid out of federal funds, if the feds have basically deemed it as an area of testing, we do have to test procurement, suspension, and debarment. So that's to make sure that the proper procurement procedures were followed. There's different thresholds that the feds require, as well as your own town policies. And then suspension, debarment is kind of another aspect of that, to make sure that any sort of vendors are not suspended or debarred based on a federal website process, basically. So just to give a little background on what that is, so during our testing, we did note that two out of the four vendors that we did select for testing had not been checked to verify that they were not suspended or debarred prior to the start of those projects. And then on top of that, the vendors were not active within that system, that the feds do kind of track, and that vendors are required to be registered and kind of tracked that way. So that was, that was the kind of ultimate issue, if you will, that resulted in that qualification, because we weren't able to verify that they were not suspended or debarred. So the risk is that vendors are being paid out of federal funds that are, that have bigger issues going on or, you know, reporting issues across all governments, not just, you know, the town. And so that's ultimately the risk. And that finding detail is laid out in a lot more detail within the finding language within the ACFER, but that was the finding number two that we did find. So I'll pause there for response there.
So the good news is this is a timing issue. As some of you may know from last year, this was a finding from last year as well. We did have corrective action in place, and we did put that corrective action into place in December and then solidified it in our purchasing policy in April of 2025. So the testing that was done were on vendors that had already gone through the process prior to the audit finding of last year. So we have rectified this. We do have controls in place, and we also have contract templates that address this for the federal grants. We also have ASAM.gov check that is included in our procurement process as well. So this has been addressed, and will continue to be addressed with every federal grant from this point forward.
Great, thank you. Right, and then the last finding that was contained within the actual scheduled findings in question costs is finding three related to the Airport Improvement Program. So this was over reporting requirements that is part of that program, and this is a significant deficiency in internal control and other matters, so that's not a material weakness that we were talking about, so a step down from that. So one of the federal reports, it's called the SF271, wasn't submitted timely, and then it was submitted kind of as part of the audit process after the fact. So that is required to be submitted on a periodic basis, and so it wasn't, you know, met the requirement, if you will. So that was not a pervasive issue, though, and we didn't feel like that was a material issue, but it still was an internal control item that we did note there as well.
And so this program in particular, we actually contracted this out. So the airport and FAA grants are actually contracted with a consultant group that specifically works with FAA grants. We don't have the technical expertise and house to write those grants, and they were responsible for submitting those. We did not have a proper check in place to make sure that they were submitted. So we are actually in the process right now, putting together the scope of work for the new RFP, because luckily, that contract is up for renewal, and we will be including language in that scope of work that actually ensures that our grants team, who has a very good track record of putting our federal compliance documents in, on time, they will be not only taking over that, but ensuring that anything is submitted on time. So that will be actually handed back over to town staff and will no longer be done by the consultant.
Thank you. Alright, and then we did just more as a comment, this is more of a letter that we do issue to management about any sort of kind of best practice recommendations or kind of lesser items that we do notice. And so we did, through our IT review that we conduct, we did have five recommendations that were provided to management. We don't typically put that in writing just because of its IT-related and security and all of that, so, but those were communicated as best practice recommendations as a result of the IT work. Alright, so just to finish up here, I mentioned that governance communications letter, so that was already issued as part of the audit issuance. Just to recap, just some of the highlights, if you will, from that letter, I already mentioned implementation of compensated absences. So that did not result in any sort of beginning impact with your net position or fund balances, but that was something that basically additional work had to be done by the town to implement that properly with the standard and no issues of note there with that work. In terms of no other kind of particularly sensitive estimates or anything like that, we didn't note. We did also have, so under kind of the right side of the slide here, other items. So these were more items that we are required to report to you if we do have any sort of audit adjustments that the town does record. We've already talked about those in the first finding, but there is what's called an uncorrected misstatement. And so that means it was something that we did notice as part of the audit procedures, but it's not a material issue. So that's something that we just have to note as an uncorrected misstatement. Typically, it's a timing thing with maybe accruals or recording things in the wrong period or the wrong account. So in this case, this was related to one of the subscription-based IT arrangements or SABIDA items. That was really a timing aspect as it relates to kind of when that, that subscription liability was recorded, as well as the related asset, and specifically, the implementation cost related to that was recorded as a reduction in expenses versus kind of incorporating that as part of the overall liability. So nothing of material nature, as I mentioned, but just something that we did need to point out. Then we did have the various corrected misstatements that we already covered in that finding, but no sort of disagreements with management as far as how things should be reported or corrected or anything like that. It was all, we all agreed on, you know, kind of the final results. And do want to say thank you very much to the town staff and management, Sarah and Ann and everyone, because it was a lot to get through and just a lot of changes and things going on. So we appreciate everybody sticking with us and getting to the right results in terms of concluding on the audits. I did want to just say thank you for all the hard work there. So otherwise, just a real quick, you know, us auditors are always living in the past, so it's nice to look into the future a little bit. So these are just kind of real quick recaps of some upcoming governmental accounting standards boards changes. So this is something that will be effective for your current fiscal year-end 25 as well as upcoming in 2026. So GASB Statement 102 around risk disclosures, we don't, based on our understanding, we don't envision this would probably be a material impact for the town's financial statements as you head into the end of 25. But there are some pretty significant changes in 2026, just to be more aware of as it relates to financial reporting. So this is really more the financial statements, especially as it relates to your enterprise or business-type funds, some kind of nuanced changes there with how things are reported, as well as some changes in your capital asset disclosure. So just wanted to give you a heads up, as the financial statements will look a bit different as you go into your 2026 fiscal year-end. With that, though, we'll, I'll kind of conclude the final presentation, though. Certainly happy to address any questions, feedback, anything like that. We're always willing to talk through anything there, and I do have my contact information within the slides as well, that you're always able to reach out additionally with any questions.
Alright, thank you for the presentation. Before I go around here, just one quick question with the airport portion of that. I assume we've reached out to Victor R. Jason for our process with that.
Yes, so David Passick is actually, has been in communication with them. We have gotten everything in that needs to get in, so that has all been rectified. And again, we are up for renewal on that contract, so they're going to actually, like I said, review the scope of work and actually put out an RFP to ensure that we're getting the best services as well. So we're pretty excited to make sure that that is corrected, because the FAA does like to get their reports on time. Luckily, they're also very good partners, and so they were pretty forgiving with us as well.
There you go. Thank you. So I think I'll just maybe go around the dice here, so I'll step to my left. So.
Great job. Congratulations on the unmodified opinion, and I really don't have any questions. You, it was a great presentation.
You, it was a great presentation. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Happy to see everything's been tied up and corrective actions have been put in place. So thanks.
Councilmember Hobak?
Oh, thank you.
I'm ready for your questions.
Yeah, huh?
No, I'm ready for your questions. I know you have a financial background. They're always great.
The vendor issue, that was not a vendor we actually did business with last year. It was they were just in the database as an approved vendor, and therefore they
So it was the hazard mitigation, or it was the hazard mitigation project that we used ARPA funding for at the Cheeseman property. And so that particular one, we did utilize that vendor. Our understanding is that there is, there was no issue that came up during that, but they were not active in SAM.gov, which is why that was flagged. So there's no way for the auditors or for the federal government to verify that they're not suspended or debarred in any other or any in any trouble with any other governmental entity, which is why it's flagged. The work is completed and over with, but to Allison's point, there is still a risk at that point that if for some reason something did happen, we did use federal dollars for that. So again, that's why those checks are now in place to ensure that that does not happen moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Guess the only other one I'll call out is the the largest of all the adjustments, adjustments, the $4.6 million. That was just, that was really just classification, right? We're calling something a negative asset rather than a liability?
Exactly.
So, okay. Congratulations on yet another clean opinion. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Poser Malle?
I don't have any questions. One thing was, when we don't submit, do we have penalties for the airport-related one?
I'm sorry.
For the airport-related finding, since we did not support, submit the 425, are there any penalties that we had to?
No, we were able to get everything in time or into the FAA, and so far, everything is okay. We're squared up with them. If we do hear anything, otherwise, we'll definitely let the council know.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Connor?
I have no questions other than just want to say congratulations on the clean opinion. And, you know, this is kind of my first time into this, so I'm observing and learning as I go here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just one quick thing on the IT approval recommendation. Was there anything around our ERP systems? I know that's come up in the past. Is there ?
That was the focus of, yeah. So basically, we kind of go through, hey, what are the significant IT systems that the town has? And then certain like user access testing, you know, testing against the policies that are in place. So nothing that we felt like we had to bring it to a finding level. It was just more best practice recommendations.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Well, yeah, again, yeah, reflect my colleagues' opinions here. They're not great, another clean audit. So yeah, appreciate it and appreciate all the work. I know you guys go through a lot to get this out here. So thank you. And I know you've got the next agenda item here, so.
I'll be here all night.
There you go. All right. So thank you once again.
Thank you, Beth.
So the next item is 25536, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Erie expressing the intent of the town to be reimbursed for certain expenses relating to the construction of certain public improvements.
So I realize that's very vague. So thank you, council, here again to discuss this. So I was going to put this on consent, but we did pull it off and thought that it would be good to just discuss it a little bit and allow you to ask any questions that you had because this is a unique type of resolution that we put forth when we're anticipating debt-like COPs. So I want to be very clear upfront that this resolution does not appropriate any funding. It does not issue any debt. This is essentially allowing us to, if any contracts come forward related to projects that we would like to fund with certificates of participation in the future, we can go ahead and approve those contracts and then reimburse ourselves once those COPs are issued. We do have sufficient cash to do that. So we are in a position where we would be able to do so. But this essentially allows the timeline for some of our projects to move forward as we get towards the guaranteed maximum price on particularly the public safety building, because we need that amount in order to have a a much more finite dollar amount for our COP issuance. So a lot of those contracting components have to happen before you issue. And so this is kind of where the cart and the horse happen. So this resolution essentially allows us to move forward with those contracts. And of course, those will still come to council. They will still be subject to your approval and your discussion. But at that point, would then allow you to approve those, knowing that the debt issuance would be coming. So that's all that this resolution does. Again, if you decided to change direction, nothing is appropriated with this. It simply allows that to happen. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that you all understood and that you, if you had any questions about what that meant, that I could answer them for you.
Sure. Okay. Any questions?
All good.
Questions?
Okay.
We're good. Okay. Just one quick question. I know that we talked about, in addition to the public safety building, there were some other things that we're talking about packaging together since this amount. I know we got the higher number with the, that's roughly takes up most of that 50 million. So if if there's additional allocations, that would be in a future disbursement or?
Yes, but I wouldn't expect us to hit the 50 million before issuance. That would be, that would be like, pretty significant. That that GMP will happen pretty close to when the actual issuance happens. So I just wouldn't expect that. So if we do have to appropriate, I would, I would expect maybe about half to three quarters if we were to get that far. But based on my conversations with Hilltop, the 50 million was was the safe number to go with, knowing that the timing for when we were going to issue that GMP would line up pretty well with when the COPs were issued.
Okay.
So that was their advice.
Yep. All right. Thank you. So with that, does someone want to entertain a motion for approval of this?
Motion to.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We've seen you soon on the budget, all right?
You'll see me every week.
There we go. All right. It's the exciting.
Have a cotton back.
Yeah. There we go. All right. So next, we are through mostly agenda items. The next item is council member reports and announcements. Went to my left this time. I'll go to my right. So Councilmember O'Connor, do you have anything?
Sure. Thank you. I wanted to thank the Erie Economic Development Department for hosting another business roundtable last week. Councilmember Bear, Councilmember Mortelaro, and I had a chance to sit in and hear from local business owners about about their successes, their struggles, ideas, hear about the business grants and rebates, the composting programs and resources, commercial development updates, and some, had some networking conversations. So thank you for hosting the event. And on that note, wanted to highlight that the home based business directory has now been published and is available on the Town of Erie website to, you know, get out there and support your small local home-based businesses. And one last item is the Town of Erie Tree Board. Their next newsletter is about to be published, and it's filled with information, tips, and it's the sixth one that they've put together. If you're interested in signing up for their newsletter, check out the Tree Boards website on the Town of Erie's website. And if you want to view the five previous newsletters, you can find a link there below the signup area. And that information's always evergreen, so it's still relevant. That's it. Thanks.
There you go. Thank you.
That was a tree pine.
Yep. Councilmember Hobak?
I don't have any to report this week.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Mortelaro? A couple, just a couple things. Grand opening for the Erie Wetlands is this Saturday at 10 o'clock on a 1,000 brig, right by the recycling center. So if you can make it out to that, great natural habitat for our native plants and wildlife and birds. So like you say, that's exciting that that's going to be opening here after a few years of a lot of work. Also, presentation by Modus Theater this Saturday at ECC at 7 o'clock on the gift of unexpected kindness. Councilmember Bear and myself will be two of the narrators. So if you can make it out for that, that'd be great. And the medication takeback is October 25th from 10 to 2 at Erie Police Department.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bear.
Thank you. Yep, I'm excited about the Modus Theater event. I know the last one was really pretty great. So that's gonna be great. Thank you to everyone who came out to the Women in Leadership Summit. It was a sellout crowd, and it was tremendous camaraderie, and it was just really great to hear all the different stories. I walked away feeling very inspired. Thank you to Deputy Town Manager Wiley for emceeing the evening and giving a really amazing, incredible presentation. If you guys ever get the chance to hear her speak, I encourage you to take that. She's truly amazing, as well as Deputy Chief Carmasino is so great. And then, let's see, I had the Dr. Cog Building Decarbonation Decarbonization Oversight Committee, and I have really good news. We renamed that because that is too hard to say. So it now is Power Ahead Colorado Oversight Committee. So I'm pretty excited about how that project is moving forward, being able to roll out our $200 million EPA grant into the community, into, you know, local governments, as well as building owners and business owners and in low-income families in their homes. So more to come with that. We also got the update on the Comprehensive Climate Action Plan for Dr. Cog region, which is pretty great. This has been a plan that's been going on for many years. They got a million-dollar grant back in 2023, and it's due at the end of this year. So pretty excited. And I was excited to learn that they've included waste, while waste contributes about 1% of the state's emissions. It contributes about a third of the Town of Erie's. And so it's exciting that they'll be looking at that and looking at ways to sort of address those emissions. So other than that, I'm testifying at AQCC tomorrow. I have Dr. Cog tomorrow, and I will see you on Saturday. So that's it.
All right. Thank you. So as you can tell, the mayor's not here tonight. He had knee replacement surgery. So I spoke to him this morning. Everything went well. So he's on the mend, so we wish him all the best. I know he's, he wants to be here next week. I told him not to push himself, and he's got a very rigorous PT regimen to go through. So obviously, our thoughts and prayers with with him on a speed of recovery and thankful that everything went well with the surgery. So thank you, Councilmember Mortelaro, for mentioning the the wetlands opening. So that's gonna be really exciting. Saturday, October 25th, there is a medication takeback. So those of you who are trying to clean out the coves, I know I've got a couple prescriptions I don't have anymore. So it's a good chance to get rid of that. Also, on the 25th, the Erie Erie downtown, so a chance to see our young kids out there. Just a safe environment for them to go trick-or-treating. And so it's always a great experience if you haven't been down there before. It's really, and then, or sorry, the Erie Erie is the race of the, yeah, the, so excited to see that happening again. And then the Boo on Briggs the same day. So yeah, Halloween's coming up. So also just be careful, the youngsters out there, and as you're driving along, and Halloween's on a Friday night this year. So obviously, yeah, be a little extra careful. Also, I know it's not a normal election cycle, but there is an election now, and ballots have been mailed out. So there are some important statewide initiatives on the ballot, and there's also a local school board election going on here. So just encourage everybody to turn in their ballots. You would want to turn them in at any of the ballot collection areas. There's one at the Rec Center. On the Wild County side, there's one at Meadow Ark Elementary on the Boulder County side. Also, just a final note here, I just wanted to just reach out to our Jewish community in town. I know that a very emotional day yesterday for the returning of the hostages. And I happen to know some friends of mine that have, you know, relatives that are living in Israel. So this is very personal for a lot of people. So very glad to see the returning of those remaining hostages. So our thoughts go out to them. And with that, that's all I have. So the last item on the agenda, we have an executive session item. So I asked for Councilmember O'Connor to make the motion.
I moved to go into executive session, executive session one, to hold a conference with the town attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B regarding Erie Highlands Metro District 1, and two, to hold a conference with the town attorney to receive legal advice on specific questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E, all regarding the town, the Erie Town Center.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We will enter executive session. We will, we will adjourn the meeting immediately after the executive session. So we will not be returning to the regular meeting. So thank you this evening, and we're adjourned.